Town manager's evaluation. This is gonna be new to me. Let me start out by saying usually the evaluation of a town manager is done after a year's of service. Chuck's service in a year was November the 10th of this year. Usually it is done in a closed session, but the manager has a choice of going in enclosed or open session. Chuck has made the choice to do it in an open session so that everybody could be here and know what's going on. I've did nine of these in closed session, I never did one in open, but you have to bear with me. I did take the lead on this and send out all the forms to fill out for his evaluation. I got them all back with Ms. Marshals. She was gonna break her own tonight. So, I don't know how we're gonna do this. Probably take thirty-five, forty minutes.
Chuck, you wanna do this in public?
You wanna do it all by reading everything, or...
That is completely at your discretion.
Jeff, I took the lead on this last year. The last year Darlene was with us. And I added up, there's various categories, I think there's like ten categories, and then there are narratives that we could expound upon. And I took the ten categories and added everybody's score together and then divided by the number of council members. Did you do any of that?
This is a different form.
This is different, but still, that could've been done for this.
We'll add it on the bottom. You know, category one, individual characteristics.
But adding shortest to my years of boss, you didn't do that?
No.
Right, okay, thank you.
Well, let's just do it like this. I'll go to each category. If you wanna read out what you gave, it's up to you, the council member. If you don't, then we'll just give a number. My number one is individual characteristics. One, two, three, four, five.
Yeah, we're gonna, I agree with what you're doing.
That's which Chuck wanted.
No, I'm fine with that. I wanna make sure you guys understand. For each thing we're gonna read, there are five numbers we can put down, one through five. Five being the highest. Then you add 'em up and divide by five gives you an average. My first average would be four point eight. That'll be the average for that. I think that's all we have to read. Is that what you want, Red Chuck?
If that's what you're comfortable with, I'm very comfortable.
I'm comfortable with reading anything, it's not about me.
Let me go with...
Next question.
Go ahead.
Do you want any public input, or no?
No, sorry, don't. You can sign up for under public comment if you wanna talk about it, but not right out like this. Under number one, individual characteristics, like Bob's here, one through five, five being the best, I gave Chuck three fives, two fours, questions of twenty-three, twenty-five, four point six.
I gave a four, I gave a four point eight. One, four, and four fives.
You want each of us to read it? Okay, I gave five out of five.
I have a four point six. Under number two, professional skills and status, five questions, I give Chuck four fives and one four, or twenty-four, four point eight average.
Out of the five questions, I gave all five fives, gives it a five average.
And I gave an average of four point six.
I gave five fives, average of twenty-five. Under number three, relations of elected members of the governing body, I give him three fives, two fours, average of twenty-three, four point six.
I gave him an average of four point eight. Four fives, one four.
And I gave him four point eight.
Five fives, average of five. Under number four, policy execution, I gave him two fives and three fours, number twenty-two, with a four point, forward. Four point four.
Yes.
Twenty-two? Yes, sir.
I gave five fives, average of five.
I gave an average of four point six.
I gave five fives, an average of five. Under number five, reporting, I gave him four fives and one four, twenty-four, or an average of four point eight.
I gave four point eight. One, four, four fives.
We're up to number six, right?
Five.
Five, five, I gave him a four point six.
Five. Under number six, citizens' relations, I give him five fives, or twenty-five, average of five.
I gave him an average of five.
I gave him four point four.
I gave him an average of five. Staffing, I gave him two fives and three fours, of twenty-two, four point four.
I gave a four point eight.
I gave four point eight.
I gave a five. Supervision, number eight, supervision, I give him four fives, one four, or twenty-four, four point eight.
I gave him a five.
I gave him four point eight.
I gave a five. Number nine, as management, I gave him five fives, twenty-five, or average of five.
I gave him an average of five.
I gave him a five.
I gave him a five. Community, I gave him three fives, two fours, or twenty-three, four point six.
I gave him an average of five.
I gave him four point six.
I gave him another five. The next part of this is written, what we would like for him to do, or whatever. The next is narrative evaluation. I wrote, he should, what would you identify as the town manager's strength, expressed in terms of the principal results achieved during the rating period? I put number one, Chuck's blaze, enthusiasm and cooperation. Number two, he's willing to try new ideas. Three, he sets meetings, agendas. He's great with that, I appreciate that. Number four, he meets with and listens to the community. And number five, his friendly relationship with the staff.
Mine are basically, he's a very good listener. He does what he says he's going to do and follows through on it to get it done and communicate with us. Probably communicates with me way too much. I didn't write that down. That's it.
Ron. I wrote down that he is friendly. I wrote down that he is approachable. I wrote down that he has, despite his positive attitude all the time. And lastly, he has a tendency to stick with problems until they are resolved. Or disappear.
Let's say he's transparent, keeps us well informed with what's happening in our town. We come straight to the point when making decisions and get to know. The next one is, what performance area or areas would you identify as most critical for improvement? I wrote number one, keeping his composure. Responding to criticism, which is hard for everyone, I think. Recruiting staff on labor positions, understanding local codes, and works well with other government bodies. The reason for understanding local codes is Chuck's new, their code books, like kids, nobody will understand that, but all of them.
I think the best thing Chuck does is keep me happy because I stop by and see him every day for about twenty minutes. I ask a ton of questions and he answers them. If he doesn't answer, he knows I'm gonna ask again tomorrow. But I love his follow-through. I love his communication. I know what's going on, there's no hidden agendas. And I wish the people in the community that whisper in my ear all the time would understand that. You gotta ask a question, like I got said here, don't ask me, ask him. He'll tell you. Tells me, tells me things I don't even wanna know, but he'll tell you. You may not like it, but he's gonna tell you.
Ron. We're reading performance areas that we would think as critical for improvement, correct?
Yep.
Okay. First, I listed three. Number one, find money and grants for the town. It's not to say that you're not doing it, but I think that that is a priority. You should do it all the time. And when we run out of places to spend the money on, we'll tell you to blow that. Secondly, take the five-year comprehensive plan that the planning commission wrote up a couple of years ago, and see how much of that comprehensive plan that you can put into execution and make it exist. Three, work with the parks and trails committee to not only talk about goals that the P and D should have, but how to provide ways that they could implement those goals.
Well, mainly, mainly, now, put this, make sure people know you're the boss. We hired you to be the boss, you know? Sometimes I think even the citizen, even county forgets it. We hired you to run the town. And sometimes I think you're a little passive in letting people know, hey, I'm in charge, we hired you. What constructive suggestions or assistance can you offer the manager to enhance performance? I wrote, keep appropriate composure in difficult problems. Would like to see an evaluation of staff and department leaders and respond to criticism better.
Trying to figure out how to put this. I like everything you do. I wrote it, you keep me very well informed. Sometimes I think you forget, like Shorty says, you're in charge. We got your back. I got your back. When I don't think you're doing a good job, I'll tell you. You're doing, I think you're doing an excellent job. And from what I hear with my wife and I walking the people on the streets, they like what they're hearing. They like what they're seeing. So just keep doing what you're doing. Be vigilant.
Again, I have three suggestions here. One is to continue giving weekly reports as to your activity levels. You've done that many times, but it's not a report that I get every week. And I'd like to see you do that, even if same old, same old, you feel like you're repeating yourself sometimes. But I appreciate that. Two, I think that Chief, besides the weekly reports to all five council members, you can contact each of us individually to ask, what are your thoughts? What are your ideas? What would you like the town of Clinton Ford to work on? I think you've got Bob covered, just twenty minutes that he does that. But, you know, reaching out to all council members just to, and if they can't think of anything, then that's a problem, but you've asked. Number three, identify overarching goals from each of the council members and suggest that they propose small projects that they would work on to achieve that type of a goal. For example, one, you wanna increase tourism in Clinton Ford, okay? Install the love sign. I think Martha's working on that with you. Increase, fix the swinging bridge. We talked about building a nature center, interpretive trails, obviously wetlands and stuff. So that would be things that they could do to improve tourism. And B, I have a thing about parks. Remove the highsores that are in the various parks, plant more trees, come up with new equipment, fix the equipment they have, expand the parks.
First one? Well, I'm basically gonna repeat myself again, let people, let people know who's in charge. You're in charge, and if any way possible, every time this rumor, this gossip gets started, we head it off before it goes any farther. It's like yeast and bread, sprays through the whole community once it gets started, and like my wife said a minute ago, when you divide people, you need unity in this town to get things done. Unity, pull people together, not dividing. And I'm not saying you do that.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, the last one is, what other comments do you have for the manager? Priorities, expectations, goals, or objectives for the new rating period? I said keep on, keep learning in town codes, keep selling town owned land that you're already doing a great job at. Need to use your authority, like everybody else has said. Keep handling affairs of the public, fair and impartial, and keep cooperation with neighboring communities and government agencies intact like we're going now.
I'm not gonna repeat what Jeff said, but I agree with a hundred percent with all of that. What you have to do is take charge. I'm one hundred percent behind you just taking charge. I don't like playing defense, I'd rather play offense. We have problems, let's go get them. Let's go get them. Dr. Lawrence.
Okay. I have six items on this category here. One is engage the planning commission. I remember a few years ago, the planning commission would give a yearly report to the town council. They would mention the projects that the planning commission was working on, what the progress toward accomplishing those projects were, and which ones could be checked off. I think that you can use the planning commission to do a lot of the small little things around here, and I wholeheartedly recommend you do so. Two, find some way that you lower the cost of water and sewage in this town. I reran for office three years ago, and the two issues that were on every single person's mind was Darlene Bertrand, and the second issue was the cost of water and sewage. I think everybody thinks water and sewage should be what it was fifteen years ago, back when we didn't have water meters and all sorts of things. We should, you know, I don't know that you're gonna fix that problem, but you should at least work on it. Okay, number three, find some way of talking to the owners that have empty store buildings downtown and get them to do something about it. Years ago, we put pictures of people, pictures of, old, old pictures of what it looked like in Clinton Ford, you know, a hundred years ago. All those pictures are falling down. You can use, I've seen Mont and Bill right there, I could use Main Street to help you with it. I don't know what you're, how you're gonna get somebody who's an absentee landlord to do something in those empty buildings downtown, but if you did, that would go a long way to making this town better. Number four, you've already talked on this, I know you're working on it, increase the apartments in the downtown area above the buildings. Do anything you can to get people to fix up their buildings, to put apartments in there. You're gonna have a problem of where do they park their cars? And that's gonna be hand in hand of what you're gonna have to do, but I think that would help. You know, one of the complaints about the Allegheny Highlands is lack of housing. You know, we can't, we can't, we're gonna have to build fifty houses tomorrow that are, you know, worth half a million and sell them to people who can afford them. We need to take what we got and increase it, and I think that we have to do a lot of things, and we do a few at a time until we got them all done. I have also, number five, dilapidated buildings around town. Use of code enforcement. Get into it. Talk to the owners of these buildings, fix them up. Make sure that they're obeying town code and the conditions of the buildings when they rent it out to people and things like that. So I think that that would be a good thing to do. And number six, and the last one, the C and O Heritage Park, sitting a block away from where we are right now, that has the potential to be a major tourist attraction for town Clinton Ford, and it isn't a lot being done in it. I know it's not owned by the town. I know that you can't tell the owners what to do and things like that, but I think that that should be a priority of Clinton Ford to where more people say, well, I wanna go see the Heritage Park. Let's go down there and go down there two or three times. My wife and I are renting out the dining car that's downtown there, and we're going to have a family get together at it in the diner. We hired Martha, works up as a hilkress. She's gonna cater it, and she's got a cookbook of what they cooked on the railroad in those diner cars and stuff. We're gonna end up, my wife and I cleaning the dining car, you know, cleaning and ironing the tablecloths, doing the Christmas decorations and things like that. I know they operate on a volunteer basis for a lot of what they do, and that's what we're gonna do. But that is an asset that could be pushed. And whatever you can do as a town manager to do that would be probably helpful. That's it.
Well, one of the margins in why I'm here, I like to express this, we're making decisions for our grandchildren. If you want your grandchildren to stay here and live in this town, you've got to make decisions for them. That's why I was skittish about the True Valley parking, turning this parking for so many years. And, you know, the decisions we're making won't affect our grandchildren ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road. And I think when we make a decision to do something, that we should be thinking ten, fifteen years down the road, not tomorrow. A lot of the decisions we're making, and like downtown, if you're gonna store stuff in these buildings downtown, some kind of organization, you got to cover it in front of your building. There's some buildings down there that looks like dumps. Sorry, I mean, it's got trash pile up in it, and that's what's in it. And if some way we could address that issue, and I know people own the property, but it's a historical downtown, and something should be done about the storefronts that have, or plant out of earth, and they're a distraction, and there's no more than storage there. It wouldn't be no different than me shutting down both my buildings and selling them for junk, and more people looking at it and see, just jump off of it. You don't need two more, two more buildings like that. So that's my opinion, the future, future in the storefronts. Thank you, Chuck. The next thing with these evaluations, I've got Bob here, I'll turn him over to Chuck. He will look through the numbers, whatever. If he has any questions, or whatever, he can come to us and we'll answer him. How you getting Ms. Marshals?
Well, I've seen the mayor that evaluation process has been completed for this year. The members that chose to participate in the evaluation process showed up tonight and presented their evaluations. And therefore, I personally would consider that this evaluation process is closed until next year.
Amen.
Amen. I'd like to summarize this, Chuck. I'm a tough grader. I don't think that you should give trophies to anybody for what they're doing because it gives them no room to improve. But generally, I think consensus of the council is, you've done a very good job for somebody who was just thrown in the last minute when the previous manager resigned, and you've made lemonade out of the lemons that you received. I think that if you take some of these suggestions that we have made, and I tried to give suggestions of people who can help you to do this sort of thing, we can, you know, it's gonna be a team effort to make this town better, and I think that we can do it if we try.
Maybe if I may.
No, go on.
I'm extremely humbled by this evaluation. It's pretty good marks. I'm ecstatic that you have that much faith in the job that I'm doing, and that I have met your expectations, and I will continue to do that and move forward. So for that, I am extremely appreciative and thankful, and glad that I've been able to step up to the plate for you. But again, I am going to ask that council make a decision tonight that the evaluation process has been completed for this year. Go ahead.
Alright. First of all, this evaluation process started, I think, almost the first of September. One of the council members asked that he be evaluated, and I took it upon myself to say that his year would be up in November, we're gonna do the evaluation at the end of September, October, November, we're gonna do it then. So my suggestion would be is that a year from now, if we're gonna do an evaluation, we're gonna start it in November and do it, and take it to the November meeting, because I, my motion would be that this process is over. So I make a motion right now that Chuck's in good standing with this council as it sits. This evaluation process is over. Can I do that, Jared? Thank you.
You're welcome. Jump right in there.
Since Chuck has been doing a good job, and usually with a good job, something comes with it, I'd like council permission to give him five extra days vacation.
Before you do that, let's move on to this.
Do I have to have a motion to do that, or?
Either, either or.
Okay.
We have a motion on the floor, and I'm seconding Bob's motion.
Okay, to close, I have a motion to close the evaluation series as is.
Yes.
I got a first and a second.
Councilman Wolf.
Yes.
Councilman Wolf.
Yes.
Councilman Umstead.
Yes.
Mayor Er.
Yes.
Now, to follow through with what Jeff had said, we made, Chuck did not get a raise, I don't think, until we done the evaluation. What Chuck had asked for was five days extended vacation, beyond what he gets now. Do we need to talk about this?
Well, I think we gave a raise to everyone that...
That was across the board, cost letting raise, that was not a merit raise.
This is a merit.
I didn't want the public to be, forget about it.
And in July, when they am, yeah.
So when I did the math, we're actually saving money if we give you five days vacation instead of a raise.
That raise, yes.
Yes, we're saving money. But I will not make that motion, I will second it if anybody wants to make it.
I'll make the motion, we give it five days. I hear a second?
I second it.
Question, what's your current vacation allowance?
One day a month, agreed.
Twelve months, you do every year. That's not counting holidays.
But, let me clarify that he started at zero days, he wasn't given any, he was given advanced days when he was hired, but he couldn't earn any days until after that time period that elapsed, so he really started almost at zero, and a year down the road, you're at zero again, basically. So he was, he was given ten days in advance, I believe, and then he couldn't start accruing them until...
He used up.
That time period was up, so he really didn't start accruing days until September of twenty-one.
Motion number four? Motion number four, and it's been seconded.
Yep.
Okay, Councilman Wolf?
Yes.
Councilman Umstead?
Yes.
Councilman Umstead?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Irvin?
Yes.